...that balance life commitments with life ambitions. Because here, transformation has no age limit. Villanova's College of Professional Studies. Pursue the next you.
I am one of thousands of women with metastatic breast cancer, or MBC.
Which is breast cancer that has spread to other parts of the body.
I am living in the moment. And taking Ibrance Alcoyl Cyclib.
Ibrance 125-milligram tablets with an aromatase inhibitor is for post-menopausal women or for men with HR-positive, HER2-negative MBC as the first hormonal-based therapy.
Be in your moment. Ask your doctor about Ibrance and visit Ibrance.com.
Ibrance may cause low white blood cell counts that may lead to serious infections. Ibrance may cause severe inflammation of the lungs. Both of these can lead to death. Tell your doctor right away if you have new or worsening symptoms, including trouble breathing, shortness of breath, cough, or chest pain. Before taking Ibrance, tell your doctor if you have fever, chills, or other signs of infection, liver or kidney problems, are or plan to become pregnant, or are breastfeeding. Common side effects include low red blood cell and low platelet counts, infections, tiredness, nausea, sore mouth, abnormalities in liver blood tests, diarrhea, hair thinning or loss, vomiting, rash, and loss of appetite.
Light blind.
Let me turn my microphone on. Good evening, everyone. This is the, I'd like to call, to order the Newtown Township Board of Supervisors meeting for September 22nd. And like to just call us to order with a couple of words. As you can tell, we have, or maybe you can't tell, there's five of us on the board, two of them are not here tonight, two of our board members. Chairman Calabro is still recovering from an illness. And David Oxley is in Connecticut, taking care of his parents at an emergency. And he also is attending to a friend's family who, the friend passed away. So that explains the absence of Phil and David and why I'm, why I'm here in front of you, leading the meeting. I did have a couple of opening remarks in line with the moment of silence. Seems that for the past year, we've been asking for acknowledgement of our, of our first responders and our healthcare professionals and just all those who serve, serve us in many ways. It's interesting that several of us on the board have been affected by COVID. Mine, mine is minor. I had a low-risk, low-risk exposure just a couple of weeks ago. And I'm tested and fine. I know I was, but, so it's, it's poignant, I think, that at this time, we recognize the fact that we've been asking for, asking for recognition of our, of our first responders and service professionals and healthcare professionals. Just ask, as we go into our moment of silence, that you get to keep that in mind. With that, I just ask for a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Would you join me in standing in pledge of allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic with its hands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as well.
Mr. Lewis, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Before we go into our special action, which we have, I just wanted to mention real quickly and the rules that were under tonight. If our solicitor could, could help us, could you confirm that three, three members is a, is a quorum?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. Yes, three members of a five-member board constitutes a quorum. So you may legally conduct business this evening. There is a somewhat peculiar requirement in the second-class township code that governs voting and taking affirmative action. It says that the affirmative vote of a, excuse me, of a majority of the entire board is required to take affirmative action, not just a majority of a quorum. So three affirmative votes will be required to take affirmative action this evening.
Thank you. That was my understanding as well. Okay, so let's move into a special, special action. We have a proclamation this evening for John Gundy Jr. And would you like to come up with your, with your fellow, with the chief? Okay, great. I have a short proclamation to read. It's almost shorter to read it than explain it. So, proclamation from Newtown Township, Bucks County, Pennsylvania, in recognition of our John Gundy Jr., Newtown Emergency Services. Whereas John Gundy has been a valued employee of the Emergency Services Department of Newtown Township, Station 55 since 1993. And whereas John Gundy began his career as a part-time fire inspector, moved up to a full-time firefighter, earning several lifesaving awards, and having served the Newtown community until his retirement on August 13th, 2021. And whereas John Gundy completed and obtained various national certifications for firefighting and emergency medical service and management, fire investigations and certifications and knowledge in building and code enforcement. And whereas John Gundy provided countless hours of community outreach events, such as visiting local schools and nursing homes, speaking about fire safety issues, entertaining children at camps with fire truck wet downs, and assisting during Newtown touch-a-truck events. And whereas John Gundy bringing his experience and knowledge has now earned the position of Chief of Bucks County Fire Marshal's Office. Now, therefore, the Newtown Township Board of Supervisors would like to recognize John Gundy and his many years of service to the Newtown Township Emergency Services Department, and wishes him a great, wishes him great success in his new role as chief. Board of Supervisors Newtown Township, September 22nd, 2021. Signed by myself and Michael Lewis, the Township Manager.
Donald, we have for the Newtown Emergency Services and Newtown Fire Association. It's an honor to represent the Lewis Board. And greetings. Presented to John Gundy, with 25 years of dedicated service, considered from Newtown and the Newtown Emergency Services Department, in both administrative and line officer positions. Presented, 2021. John, congratulations. Best of luck in your new job.
Did everybody get a picture? Who needed a picture? Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, that being completed, we come to our first round of public comment. We welcome anyone who would like to make a comment, come up to the podium. These are, this time is reserved for those comments that don't apply to an agenda item this evening. So please come up, introduce yourself and proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening to the Board of Supervisors and Township residents. My name is Andrea Ahern. I'm a resident of Eagle Ridge, and I am proud to say that I have called Newtown my home for the better part of 38 years. I wanted to take this opportunity to commend the Township Zoning Hearing Board for their important vote on Monday, September 20th, by upholding an ordinance and further, further protecting our community from continued overdevelopment. As we have seen at recent Board of Supervisors meetings, the residents of this township do not shy away from vocalizing concerns regarding overdevelopment. And as this board is well aware, I share those concerns and passion to preserve the authenticity of Newtown and its charm. At the heart of this zoning hearing board vote was a genuine desire to also preserve that charm and the unique qualities of our town, which true Newtonians appreciate and want to fight to uphold, because once those qualities are gone, we cannot get them back. Newtown needs more volunteers and leaders like those on the zoning hearing board, who will work hard to seek transparent, inclusive, and reasonable planned development for our community. As a lifelong resident of Newtown, I sincerely appreciate the tenacity of the zoning hearing board with this most recent vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Joe Hellock, and I live at Delancey Court across the street, 37 Rittenhouse Circle. And I'm currently the president of our HOA at Delancey Court. I would like to have read into the record my comments regarding the proposed building of the 45 homes along the Twining Bridge Road and the proposed egress points. On September 8th, I sent a letter to the Board of Supervisors regarding the conditional use application to build the 45 homes along Twining Bridge Road. This letter was in response to Greg Alderman's letter of August 28th, and Greg is the attorney representing Toll. And I trust that the board has read the letter. We were dismayed that Greg Alderman's letter was only sent to a handful of Delancey Court residents, and in the spirit of full disclosure, why wasn't everyone in the development notified at that time? The proposed location of the access road in the letter from Greg Alderman is directly across the street from Delancey Court, and we only have one egress point. Since the letter from Greg Alderman is the only communication Delancey Court has received from Toll in more than a year, we can only have educated guesses to formulate their Why did Toll not consider the North Drive outside of Newtown Grant and their development The municipal drive alternative certainly needs more extensive evaluation. I stated in my letter to the township, a precondition that a traffic light be installed is an absolute necessity before construction begins. The additional traffic from the new homes that would most certainly exacerbate the congestion that we are currently experiencing. Going forward, we would expect to be notified whenever you plan to discuss this project, and we would welcome any township supervisors at our Delancey Board meeting to further clarify and discuss this situation. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Frank McCarron, and my address is 42 Rittenhouse Circle in Newtown. I'm submitting at this meeting a copy of the October 2008 case study by the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission of Durham Road and Wrightstown in Newtown Townships. I request that this study be attached to the minutes of this meeting. The commission specifically recommended in Figure 7B of the study that the Toll Brothers' Twining Bridge Road parcel be accessed by the traffic light at North Drive. There was never supposed to be egresses from this development onto Twining Bridge Road, nor onto Municipal Drive. I asked the Board of Supervisors to authorize an independent investigation to determine why the recommendation in this study was not followed. This study says on page one that its recommendations were developed with municipal, county, and PennDOT staff participation. By not having the knowledge in this study preserved and incorporated into the conditional use planning process, the township has suffered an integral failure in its approval procedures for this Toll Brothers property. Either someone in the planning process dropped the ball, or something procedurally went wrong. And I believe that someone independently should determine what happened and what can be done to prevent it from happening again. As for diverting traffic to Municipal Drive, I believe that the Board of Supervisors owe the residents of Delancey Court an explanation as to why we were kept in the dark about this proposed settlement for what appears to be nearly a full year. In his letter of August 27th, Attorney Greg Alderman said that Toll Brothers discussed this proposed settlement with the Board of Supervisors almost a year ago, shortly after Toll filed its appeal in September of 2020. The date of the engineering plan prepared by ESE Consultants was November 10th, 2020, over 10 months ago. The plan also indicates that there were four revisions. The description of the last two revisions in March and May of 2021 were called Township Comments. It was not only obvious involvement by the township in drafting this plan, but ample time to approach the residents of Delancey Court, either directly or through its HOA to seek our input, but no one chose to do so. For that matter, there was also ample time to approach PennDOT, but perhaps someone was worried that PennDOT would say to follow the recommendation in the study. I am requesting that you bring this study to PennDOT's attention and seek their input prior to moving forward with any settlement. Residents of Delancey Court should also be allowed to advocate their position with PennDOT as part of this process. I submitted a right-to-no request to the township last week, requesting, among other things, the complete plans submitted to the township by ESE Consultants, including revisions and related correspondence. The response I received was that my request was under attorney review, and I should receive an answer as to whether my request will be honored by October 20th. Therefore, I am asking that an independent review also address how this matter has been handled vis-à-vis communication with affected residents and PennDOT. At the August 26, 2020 meeting of the Board of Supervisors, a number of residents, including me, suggested that the entrance to this community be aligned with the traffic light at North Drive. I don't believe anyone is aware of that study at the time. The only person who voiced an objection was Mr. Calabro. Mr. Calabro's bio indicates that he is a longtime resident of Newtown Grant, having served for over 20 years on the Society Place HOA Board, and having been both the former president and vice president of the Newtown Grant Master Board. I have no problem with residents advocating for what is in their personal best interest regarding this new development, provided they are advocating from this podium. By voicing his objections during the August 26, 2020 meeting about North Drive, given he lives near that intersection and his prior representation of residents of Newtown Grant, I believe that Mr. Calabro has demonstrated a conflict of interest in this matter. Given how this settlement has been kept secret, I am concerned both how the chairman's position was interpreted by Toll Brothers, as well as what was said in private executive sessions of the board, particularly with supervisors running for reelection. Therefore, I am asking that the chairman recuse himself from this matter, or at a minimum, if this proposed settlement is brought to the Board of Supervisors for a vote, that the chairman abstain from voting. I invite Mr. Calabro to stand at this podium and state his objections to the recommendation of the Delaware Valley Planning Commission. Lastly, I am calling on the township to undergo an independent review as to whether the ICMA Code of Ethics has been followed in this matter. The way this matter has been handled, in my opinion, runs afoul of that Code of Ethics, namely, Tenet Three, members should conduct themselves so as to maintain public confidence in their position. I believe that the lack of transparency with the Delancey Court residents for nearly a year violates this tenet. Tenet Four, members should inform the governing body of the anticipated effect of a decision on people in their jurisdictions, especially if specific groups may be disproportionately harmed or helped. The question here is who knew or should have known that this settlement disproportionately harms the senior citizens residing in Delancey Court? Tenet Seven, members may advocate for issues of personal interest only when doing so does not conflict with the performance of their official duties. I believe that township officials owe a duty to the safety of residents that supersedes the interests of the community in which they live. Tenet Nine, keep the community informed on local government affairs. I believe there has been a prolonged and ongoing breach of this tenet. In conclusion, the concerns of Delancey Court should be addressed in advance of and part and parcel to any proposed settlement. Thank you.
Before we go on, could I just beg a moment of time to let the solicitor clarify where we are in this process?
Yeah.
Before we repeat it so many times.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I think the, the residents of Delancey Court know, this is a settlement proposal. Nothing has been decided, nothing has been acted on by the board. It's not on tonight's agenda, it's not going to be on the next meeting's agenda. It's not ready to be considered by the board. And the board has asked me to schedule a meeting with residents of Delancey Court, Toll Brothers, and township staff to discuss the issues that the neighbors are concerned with. So that meeting is yet to be scheduled. It will be scheduled. No decision will be made by this board until that meeting is held. And we also have asked that a traffic signal warrant form be submitted to PennDOT to see whether the intersection warrants a traffic signal based on the number of trips, the accident history, and whatever other factors the PennDOT, the PennDOT uses to determine whether a signal is warranted. That is in the exclusive jurisdiction of PennDOT and not within the jurisdiction of the, of the township. Additional and new traffic counts are being made for traffic on 413 already, and I would assume traffic exiting Delancey Court would be included in that, plus traffic entering and exiting the municipal complex, the fire, and public works, buildings in the back, et cetera. Finally, with regard to the issue of a potential conflict between emergency services vehicles, fire police and emergency services, and cars coming from the proposed development that would use Municipal Drive to exit the development. The plan proposes a, an emergency access road that runs behind the police, current police building, and accesses 413 further south than Municipal Drive, so that if municipal emergency services vehicles are required to exit and head south, or avoid traffic, or any vehicles waiting to exit at Municipal Drive, they can use this alternative emergency access-only route to get on to 413. We've also had the opinions of the police, the fire, and the emergency services departments that they are not concerned at all with any potential conflict with regular passenger vehicles of residents from the proposed development or others at the intersection of Municipal Drive and 413. So that's a little bit of a summary of where we are. Again, emphasize, there will be a meeting with the Delancey Court residents, Toll Brothers, and township staff to review issues of import to the neighbors. The township has received all of the neighbors' letters, emails, and correspondence. They have been distributed to all supervisors. I think everybody is very aware of your concerns. And that's about it, as far as that goes.
I, I really feel that the supervisors really are not understanding my position here. The supervisors are allowing Toll Brothers to drive the narrative, instead of the township driving the narrative. So for example, to me, is not what's relevant is whether or not a traffic light is warranted. To me, it's what's relevant is going to PennDOT and saying, "We have a recommendation that you are part of to access this access at North Drive. Do you think it would be safer to have it at North Drive or at this unsignaled intersection here?" That's what's relevant. Toll Brothers is advocating for their position, not for, for us. I mean, they sent me a letter, that's fine, they can advocate for their position, but it's not like they said in their letter, "Here are the great things about our proposal. On the other hand, here's what's wrong with our proposal. We haven't addressed flooding on Twining Bridge Road. We really don't care if a few seniors might get in more accidents than if they exit on North Drive." It's up to the township. The township is who represents us, who township is the one that should be taking the lead here and acting on our behalf. If you're going to let Toll Brothers drive the bus, which is what's been described to me, then you're going to get a result that is a result that is not going to be in the best interests of residents. I believe that township supervisors need to step up and control the narrative here. Don't let Toll Brothers just sell what they want to say. What they want to say to, fine. Toll Brothers wants to say things to PennDOT, fine. What's the township's view? Say the township's view. Let, let us say our view. You're not, you're not letting, well, you're just not recognizing that you've, you've given Toll Brothers the, the control of the narrative here, and you need to take it back. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarron. I know this is not a time for back and forth, this is for the public to make comments, but Mr. Mack, do you have something else?
Uh, yeah, I mean, thank you, Mrs. Sander, for your information, some of which is the first time I've ever heard of it. And you mentioned, for example, that the board instructed you to have this meeting. Again, that's one of the items I've never heard about until just now. When you say the board did that, when did we do that?
If I said board, I misspoke. I meant the Township Manager's Office and staff.
I see. Okay, so at, how does that meeting get organized? Is it just the, the members of Delancey Court and the township personnel? Are, does board members get involved like we did with when we had conversations about the Arcadia project, where we specifically had supervisors on a Zoom call, for example? Because I'm afraid I agree with Mr. McCarron, we're not getting firsthand information. You know, we're getting it secondhand.
How, how is that, Mr. Mack?
Well, if you have this meeting, and I'm not invited to the meeting, whatever happens...
You're invited, you're invited to the meeting.
Okay, well, that's, thank you for clarifying that.
If, if there's more than, more than two supervisors present, it has to be a public advertised meeting.
Well, now...
If there are less, let me finish. If there's less than, if there are two or less supervisors present, then it doesn't have to be an advertised meeting, but that notice, notice will be given to anyone who are invited.
We're not, we're not talking about, you know, any business decisions. I know we've had supervisors more than two supervisors...
Doesn't matter, we're discussing agency business, and that has to be advertised.
Didn't we participate in the Arcadia discussions? Was that...
No more than two, no more than two supervisors participated in any given discussion about Arcadia at any one time.
Okay, maybe the, I'm too old, I can't remember, so I'll have to go back and look at my recording of that Zoom meeting.
If it was more than two supervisors, it was advertised.
Let's continue with the public comment. Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Hope I can take this off.
Please introduce yourself.
I'm having a hard time hearing you, Dennis, with yours on. Anyway, good evening. My name is Bill Schreiber. I'm also a resident at Delancey Court at 105 Rittenhouse Circle across the street. I have some comments of a different nature around using the township, municipal complex property as part of Toll's solution to this development that they're proposing. So, you know, based on scale maps that they sent us, okay, and a township map that I got yesterday from the township office, this is a rough block. It's going to be hard to see because it's blown up from the little teeny stuff that Toll sent us. But this represents the complete municipal complex. It's about 24 acres over there. The area in blue here is what's left of this parcel for expansion of township services, okay? Think of the possibility of a community center. Think if the office space isn't enough for all the township departments, where would you put it? So, there is space here, roughly seven and a half acres that's available today. And the proposal that's being put forward puts this roadway right in the middle of that available space, that seven and a half acres. Takes about three acres of it, okay, to do that. And it makes the rest of the property pretty hard to use. This area is only about 1.6 acres, small area at the front, and it'd be tough to get access along Municipal Drive there, given all the other things we've been talking about here. And the area in the back really can't be accessed unless you do something to interfere with the current approach to the Public Works Building that's here. So, the question I guess I have here is, you know, why is it that the town would facilitate pulling residential traffic 1,500 feet south from the center of this development, dumping it onto the municipal complex, all right, and then conceding that valuable property to a $7.2 billion company, Toll Brothers, all right? And, you know, making it impossible to expand the township services, you know, as we may well need sometimes. So, how would the township, how would the citizens of the township be compensated for giving away such an important and strategic piece of property? So, maybe there's a different solution that's been proposed. Maybe they plan on buying it for several million dollars or something like that. But in any case, it certainly, I think, is going to interfere with the possibility of expanding the use of the very important municipal complex that we're sitting in here tonight. So, that really is all I had to comment. I have a copy of these comments as I read them tonight in this picture, and I was just wondering if it could be included.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Schreiber.
Hello. My name is Maureen Schreiber, and I also live at 105 Rittenhouse Circle. And my comments tonight are in regards to the All Saints Cemetery proposed settlement. My biggest concern is for safety, and thank you, Mr. Counselor, for clarifying some of the questions that I have. So, some of my questions you may have addressed, but if it's okay with you, I'd like to express them as I have prepared them.
By all means.
My main concern is for all residents of Newtown. And the current proposal, which recommends using Municipal Drive as the primary entrance, I believe is a disaster waiting to happen. As we all know, we have a lot of the municipal complex. We have the Public Works, water towers, snow plows, fire, and police, all using that. And the thought of mixing residential traffic with emergency and emergency service vehicles, I think, is irresponsible. I think it could delay responses when we know minutes or even seconds can matter in an emergency. Imagine commuter traffic, including cars, buses, a snowplow, and an Amazon delivery truck lined up on Municipal Drive waiting to exit and get on to 413 while we have cars on 413 trying to come on to Municipal Drive, and there's a fire, and we have to have fire trucks and police respond. Municipal Drive does not have a shoulder, so I can't imagine how those cars would be able to clear the way for the emergency vehicles. I'm guessing that we all hope our house is not burning down in that type of a situation. The municipal drive, I believe, is also pretty much at capacity. As you know, I live across the street, and one could argue that a light is warranted right now because of the traffic and the emergency vehicles. Yet, there is no mandate or agreement to put a light in should this proposal be approved, as it is currently written. And I wonder why would PennDOT recommend and approve a light there when there is a clear recommendation, based on the study that Frank submitted, to use the intersection at North Drive where a traffic signal already exists? So, I have a lot of questions for the board of supervisors tonight. And I guess one of them is why are we even considering Municipal Drive when a recommendation has been made by experts? And I think that was primarily funded by the department, the PennDOT. That recommendation was to use Municipal Drive intersection. And why hasn't that been explored? Have you... North Drive. Have you really fully explored the safety implications of co-mingling residential traffic with emergency services? And I think it also came up a little bit earlier, which my question once answered. When does PennDOT get actually involved in making a decision? Do they make that decision before you approve or disapprove this? And if they do recommend putting in any kind of a signal or turning lanes or widening Municipal Drive, when does that take place? Does that take place prior to construction? And if not, when? Because, as you know, developments take a long time to be completed. So, we could go a long time without having those safety features in place before, you know, the development is completed. I also wondered if anyone had communicated with the fire marshal or the police chief, and I guess they have. But more importantly, has anyone talked to the folks with the boots on the ground, the police officers, the firefighters, the snowplow drivers? Because those are the folks that put their lives on the line for us every day, and I feel that their input should be considered. My husband recently just mentioned about using municipal land for... Well, the road would cut through municipally-owned land. And I... We went over to the township building yesterday to get the map and to confirm that the township did own that land. And we spoke with a representative who was responsible for land development. And this individual was surprised that there would be any use of municipal-owned land to access Municipal Drive if that new development goes in. The one thing that also concerns me a lot is I hope we're not heading down the road of the Arcadia development. I read in the August 11 meeting notes, and this is a quote, "That the Arcadia Development final plan could proceed for approval while access to the site is still being considered by PennDOT. And I just hope we're not heading down that same road where the proposal would be approved without all of the necessary safety features fully evaluated and implemented prior to construction." Thank you. And I hope... Would you mind if I submitted this for... Okay. For inclusion in the remarks. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi. I'm Carol Urbach. I live at 102 Rittenhouse Circle and, again, Delancey Court. I am the secretary of our board, of our HOA. I really wasn't going to get up here tonight because I agree and would have to reiterate everything that my neighbor said. However, you know, when I was here last time and I said we were disappointed that we were never notified that this was... I didn't have Greg Adelman's letter with me. Everyone here said, "Oh, well, this is the first you heard of it." The letter says, "After filing the appeal, Toll and the board discussed a possible settlement." And you all said, you know, that that wasn't true. And I found out something tonight, and that's the only reason I got up here, is that if you... If the Board of Supervisors has two supervisors and no more, that I guess you can all get together and have this discussion with Toll about this development without anybody knowing about it. Is that true?
Well, the Sunshine Act requires that if there is a majority of the Board of Supervisors together, they are not permitted to discuss agency business. Agency business has a definition dealing with the business of the township without being in an advertised public meeting. Two or a minority of the Board of Supervisors can talk to each other. They can talk to anybody they want, but...
Including Toll, including this proposal.
Any of the five supervisors could call up Toll Brothers tomorrow and talk to Toll Brothers. It's not... There's no prohibition against that. But the fact that you're here tonight before any decisions have been made means that you were given appropriate notice of what's happening here. And it's not after the fact. It's before the fact, so that not only have you been able to voice your concerns in emails and letters and appear tonight, but, as I say, when we have a meeting, you'll be involved as well. Nothing's been done. This isn't a... Well, it's too late. We didn't tell you, and now you're up the creek without a paddle. You're here, and the time is now. And nothing's going to get done until everybody has their say.
Unfortunately, people that receive this letter and read it the way it's written, it sounds like, quote, "a done deal."
It's not.
Well, okay. And the other thing is, when we first moved in, I've been here since 2007, Mr. McGrath told all of us that he was told by the police chief that a light was planned there at that intersection because of the municipal complex and the police being here. And then we heard stories, "Oh, well, they'll do it later." And, you know, of course, then McGrath went bankrupt, and that's another story. And then, in the process of that, some people found out that there was a light approved at Stufel Road more than 15 years ago. Is that not true? I don't know, but if that's still not there.
I don't believe that's true. I lived in Rosefield for 18 years and used that intersection every single day of my life, and there was never a... There was talk about it.
There was talk.
Certainly talk about it. That intersection is in Wrightstown Township, technically.
Right.
So, Wrightstown would be working with PennDOT on that. But I've heard talk, never saw anything happen with it.
Okay. Well, my hope is that after some of the things you heard tonight, that you'll take that into consideration. And I'm looking forward to the meeting with Toll and, I guess, Micah and the staff. And hopefully, we'll have some... Be able to have some impact. Thank you.
Mr. McCarron, do you have any follow-up?
Yes. So, two things. I noticed everyone had submitted their comments, so I guess I'm going to submit my comments to the record.
Thank you.
Second, Solicitor, I respectfully disagree with your statement that since we've been given notice prior to a vote, that therefore we've been given adequate notice. This matter has been going on for a year. And after a year, the only person who has asked us for any comments or submitted any comments was Toll Brothers, and they asked that comments be submitted to them.
At the direction of the Board of Supervisors specifically.
Where does it say that?
And where does it say that? In the minutes of a past meeting when the board authorized a reach out to Toll and said, "If you're going to submit a settlement plan, you must, before you come before us, to get approval or consideration of a settlement plan, that you must notify everyone that you notified when you had your conditional use."
Okay.
The number of people notified goes way beyond the number of people that are required by the ordinance to be notified, which is a 500-foot radius of the property. Notice went out to, and I think Mr. Fisher can certainly support this, notice went out to Devonshire Meadows, Nob Hill, Colonial Commons, Newtown Reserve, is it? Residents on Twining Bridge Road, some residents in Newtown Grant, Delancey Court, anyone who was given the original notification of the conditional use hearing, and others. So, at the board's request and the board's demand of Toll, they sent out these notices. So, it wasn't Toll's good nature as to why you got notice of this.
That's fine.
It was the Board of Supervisors who asked that that happened.
Again, I think the Board of Supervisors have been improperly advised because the Board of Supervisors have allowed Toll Brothers, again, to drive the narrative, send the comments to Toll Brothers. They write a letter that they don't say, again, don't say any of the cons, just the pros. What do you think of this? They don't say any of the cons. And so, again, I respectfully disagree with you.
We'll agree to disagree.
I'm very disappointed with this board. I want you to step up and take control of the narrative. It is not relevant whether or not PennDOT thinks a light's necessary. What's relevant is what's safer for residents, exiting at North Drive or exiting at unsignalized intersection at Municipal Drive? That's what's relevant. Take control of the narrative, please.
Again, thank you, Ms. McCarron. We'll read all the submissions again. And I know I, for one, have listened. I, for one, have listened well, taken notes. I believe myself that we're in maybe the fourth inning of a nine-inning game. And I think there's plenty of time to incorporate some... Address all of your concerns. Maybe not the way we all want them. It might not please everybody. But I do believe that we will address all your concerns. Are there other members of the audience who would like to give public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. No minor approvals. Reports of boards, committees, and commissions. Mr. Fidler is here for the Planning Commission. I believe you had a meeting last evening.
Yes, we did. Good evening. Alan Fidler, Chairman of the Newtown Township Planning Commission, here to give you a brief synopsis of our August 21, 2021 meeting. We had zoning hearing board application, Mr. Robert McFarland, 421 Taylor Avenue. Mr. McFarland was in attendance to review his application for a special exemption and a variance for increased impervious surface of 19.09 percent, where 13 percent is the maximum, to build a storage shed and a screen porch. The commission recommended that the board not oppose this application. Our second item of business last evening was a PRD variance. Robert and Valerie Mahone at 144 Penswood Drive had an application, and Mr. Mahone and Rob McCorvin of Sylvan Pools were in attendance to review this application for increased impervious surface of 29.54 percent, where 25 percent is the maximum permitted to install an in-ground pool. The commission recommended that the board approve this application, subject to a number of conditions, including the compliance with Remington and Vernix letter dated September 13, 2021, and the Nob Hill Owners Association conditions. After reviewing this application, we briefly discussed the large number of pool applications we have seen this year. We asked our engineer about the possible environmental impact of backwater dish charge when cleaning pool filters. Leanna assured us that the grass acts as a filter on dirty water before it gets into the storm drains, but on smaller lots, it could possibly become a concern. She noted that the township does not permit diverting pool cleaning water directly into the storm drains. Our last item of discussion was Spox County Planning Commission's proposal for the OLI and the LI district, although the commission has not... Although the Commission has not seen the revised proposal, we did discuss the work to be done in conjunction with the Economic Development Committee, and would recommend that asking for possible timeline for when this work would be performed by Bucks County Planning Commission. We might also recommend that rather than holding separate meetings with all the participating committees individually, the supervisors might like to consider a supercommittee, our term, made up of the EDC, Planning Commission, along with a few interested supervisors. We thought this might be more efficient in trying to follow one schedule rather than each committee's meeting schedule dates. It may constitute a work session or whatever process the solicitor and the township wants to consider, but getting the players together in a concise format may keep the cost at a reasonable expense and, and get the input necessary to move the process through in a more expeditious way. Again, that concludes my report.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a comment? Yes, I was going to thank Mr. Fidler and ask for comments.
Thank you.
Yes, I would certainly like to be a member of that supercommittee, but if there are three of us, I don't know if there's going to be a problem. Maybe your recommendation that it be in a work session might be the best way to go, because that would also already be advertised, and we don't make any real decisions at that point.
Sure. And you can make the invitation to the committees to participate in the work session if, if you have a mind, and, you know, I'm sure some of us will be able to fit it in our schedules.
And we may be able to accommodate people to participate via Zoom, hopefully.
Hopefully, yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Ladies?
Kyle, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
We've, we've done this before. We've created like a supercommittee for open space or trails.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so that, we know, we know how to do it. Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Have a good evening.
That brings us to reports of Board members. I just have a real brief report. I have gotten out the recommendations from the E-Consult Solutions. There are summary recommendations and implementation guidelines for the five-year, five-year plan that, that was presented last year, and I've started enumerating what progress we've made on each one of those. I know that might be of interest to Mr. McCarron, he's mentioned it before, and so that prompted me to do that. I will be presenting that to the Board once I, you know, what I think is a finished product, and hopefully that's in the next few days, because I also wanted to share it with the Finance Committee. So that will be something we can talk about a little bit more later. John, Mr. Mack?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I have a few things. I hope people don't get bored, but as the Technology and Communications Committee wants to have a meeting with employees to talk about improving the township's website, and I think Catherine McGovern was going to try to organize that. I don't know if there's any further progress on that, but that's one of the things that the Technology and Communications Committee want to see happen. The Environmental Advisory Council, I think as all the Board members know, has submitted a draft amendment to the Newtown Township Vegetation Ordinance, and they are asking that this be moved forward. So at some point, I would, I talked to Mr. Lewis, I believe, who informed us that the next step would be to have our solicitor format this draft ordinance somehow for review by the Planning Commission. Is that correct? Would that be the next step?
That would be the next step.
So may I make a motion that we do that? I'd make a motion that we authorize the solicitor to format this draft ordinance so that for, it can be reviewed by the Planning Commission.
What is the topic of the ordinance, Mr. Mack?
Oh, you didn't?
I did not, no.
Sorry about that. It's a draft amendment of the Newtown Township Vegetation Ordinance.
Vegetation ordinance, okay.
Are you familiar with that? I, I haven't read it myself.
A, a, a draft was
It was submitted to the Board.
Correct.
Yeah.
Let's be, let's take our time here. That motion, and this is all under the brand-new amendment to the Sunshine Act that took, took effect on August 29th regarding adding things to the agenda and taking action on things that are, do not appear on the agenda. We're under Board members' comments, and that doesn't appear under here. So if you want to make a motion to do something that's not on the agenda, first, we need to make a motion, and it's got to pass tonight, 3-0, to amend the agenda to consider that, given the reasons why we need to consider that tonight for the minutes, and then we can vote on your proposal, and the minutes have to reflect the vote, and a revised agenda must be posted tomorrow
Okay, okay.
On the website.
All right, great. What about new business? Don't we bring up issues on the new business?
But not. You can bring up any business you want, but if you want to take action, you've got to go through that procedure that our esteemed current legislature
Okay.
in Harrisburg has devised for us.
I make a motion that we put this on the next meeting's agenda.
We can, I think we can do that without a motion.
We can do that without a motion? I request, therefore.
And, and I would appreciate that, because truth be told, I have not read the ordinance.
All right, so, give us some more time for that.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Also, I am the liaison with the Council Rock School Board, and a resident sent me an email complaining about the lack of bus service for his children, and I communicated with Mr. Ed Tate, who's a member of the school board, and he sent me a notice from the Director of Transportation at Council Rock. They are currently short about 10 to 15 drivers, and they noted that their first student who handles the bus, busing is actually having their staff driving buses, I guess the real term is "drive bus," and they are not able to adequately communicate this to residents. So that's why I'm trying to bring it up here. I don't know when and if they have been, if these issues have been resolved as of yet, so I think it's mostly due to, you know, many other places have shortages of bus drivers, truck drivers. It's playing real havoc in a lot of school districts, not just Council Rock, and that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mack. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have the Park and Rec Report for today, registered today for the following upcoming programs, which are starting soon. There are super-scientists, creative theater, terrarium building, archery, and yoga mazia. And also, excuse me, I don't forget to follow Newtown Park and Rec at Newtown Fun. Also, on October 30th, Newtown Rotary is holding a used bicycle and sewing machine drive. They send used bicycles and sewing machines to third-world countries. Excuse me, I have a bug there. I mean, something in my throat.
Uh-oh.
No, 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 a bug, sorry. Misspoke. Anyway, so they go to third-world countries and, if you need more details, it's just a good thing. It's going to be St. Andrews Church, the parking lot across from old St. Andrews Church, on October 30th, 9 to 12 in the morning. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. No items for a public hearing, none for land development. That brings us to reports of officials, and I believe we have a update on our engineer's report.
Yep, thank you. I just wanted to provide a few quick updates on a few projects that we're working on. Regarding the Lower Dolington Road Multi-Use Trail, I just received the contracts now executed by the township, so because we have a lot of grant funding associated with this, the next step is that we will submit the executed contracts to DCNR for their review. Hopefully, they'll turn that around quickly, and we can issue the notice to proceed for the contractor. We did have the pre-construction meeting last week, so we are ready to move forward with that once we have approval from DCNR. Regarding the village at Newtown, now that they're pretty much complete with construction there, developers required to complete a post-development traffic study. They are roughly at about 77% leased, so they will begin that traffic study process now, hopefully completing it in the fall. You know, they'll be using general traffic control, you know, general standards to estimate those unoccupied areas to, to make a, you know, an accurate assessment. So we'll work with them to review that with them as well. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
I think Mr. Mack's going to ask the same question I am. Go ahead.
I'll take the prerogative. About, about how long is the timeframe for the Lower Dolington? I know you enumerated the steps.
So, again, I'm not sure how long DCNR will take to approve. I anticipate possibly, you know, a week or two.
Typically.
We'll get that to them, and then it's a 90-day construction window from that point.
Okay, yeah, so, 90 days to, to complete?
To complete the project, yep.
Good. Thank you. Thank you for that update. I, I was actually going to make a question about the traffic. It's a traffic study. I, I'm not quite sure exactly what goes into that kind of study, but from other studies that we've seen, they have somebody there who's actually monitoring cars coming in and out and so forth. I am assuming that that is what they'll be doing, not just some kind of hypothetical model based on their, whoever the business is there, and that, do we have any kind of, say, you know, if they're observing traffic, when they observe the traffic? Like, if they're going to observe, observe the traffic on Wednesday afternoon rather than Friday night, or rather than Monday morning, you know, it's going to be, you know, not the optimum kind of report that I would be interested in. But do we have any say in that?
Yeah, we, we will. Typically, a lot of times, you know, we'll, as the traffic engineer, we will work with them in terms of the items that we want to see included. I'm not a traffic engineer specifically, but typically, they, they do look at weekday trips as well as weekend trips. That's something that they do look at, and, you know, they will be looking at those trips. The only time that they're going to be estimating is for the tenants that aren't, you know, the tenant spaces that aren't filled. So, you know, we'll work with them to make sure that they're using, you know, the most up-to-date standards to, to complete that.
Thank you very, very much. Thank you. And thanks for making the long commute to come to our meeting and make a report.
You are welcome.
Next on the agenda is Solicitor's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's only one item on our report this evening, and that would be to ask the Board if it wishes to take a position on the zoning hearing board application that Mr. Fidler summarized during his report. It's the application of Robert McFarland at 421 Taylor Avenue, variances to construct a screened porch and a storage shed. Is the Board of a mind to take a position on that application?
My mind would be to not oppose it.
Okay. Thank you. That concludes our report.
Okay. Mr. Lewis, you have a manager's report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. General fund balances of this evening is $4,840,979. Plan expiration is before the Board with no action required. We have Chief Forsythe here this evening, again. Evening, Chief.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'd like to present the August 2021 Monthly Report to the Board. Combined calls between Newtown Fire Association and Emergency Services was 122 calls for service. We conducted 78 fire safety inspections in Newtown Township, and we conducted five in Newtown Borough. The report looks a little different than I'm submitting to you, because we're still working on a changeover for the software, so as soon as we get it all worked out, you'll see, hopefully it'll look a little bit easier for you to read, and we'll answer any questions you have. Our new rescue truck went into service on August 13th. It's been in service for a month. We're working the bugs out of it. Everything, things seem to be working fine on it. Just a couple of things. Quinn Jones is our new firefighter that we hired. He will start tomorrow, and October 6th is the housing of new Rescue 45 at Station 45. So that is my report for the month of August. If anybody has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
What time is the official housing?
The, we're having light refreshments at 6 o'clock, and the housing will begin promptly at 7:00.
Good. I'll be there for the refreshments.
Perfect. We look forward to seeing everybody.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Chairman, first item under my report for the Board's consideration relates to the tasers in the Police Department. 2021 budget had allocated $22,000 under the capital plan for the purchase of 12 tasers. Chief Hearn has reached out to Axon Incorporated for different options. They have provided us with the opportunity to acquire all new taser equipment for all of the officers, including warranties, ammunition, batteries, maintenance, et cetera, for an annual cost of $16,825.32 payable over five years. Currently, the township is spending separately to purchase ammunition under, and maintenance and batteries that we, that would be covered under this proposal. So the appropriate motion would be motion to approve the five-year agreement with Axon Enterprise Incorporated for police tasers in the amount of $84,126.58, with five annual payments of $16,825.32.
Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
A second. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Any questions from the Board?
Do, do we, does the Police Department currently have tasers? I mean, you mentioned ammunition. I guess you're just talking about tasers, but
Yes, it's just taser ammunition. We, we have tasers, and we go through eight years of replacement cycles. They last about five years. We're paying for additional for the warranties. We need the ammunition for prac, not only practice purposes.
What, what is the ammunition? What is it?
It's, it's sort of, Chief Hearn is here, maybe he can speak to you a little better. I'm not a police officer, but it's, it's the charge.
It's stuff. Cartridges.
Right, cartridges and, and the charge to
The way, right.
The projectile that comes out with the probes.
Okay. I guess the chief doesn't have to explain further. Do you practice on each other with those tasers, or what? I'm just wondering, I've seen police departments actually test them out on themselves sometimes. Do you do that?
It's optional for the new officers, yes, and it's done.
It's like an initiation, I guess?
Oh, it's, it's, it's a reality check to see what, like, to see what they're doing.
John, you want to volunteer to test? Test it on?
Well, I don't know, if I, if I were younger, I might, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? Thank you.
Mr. Lewis, this is state-of-the-art equipment. I guess I should have let the, let the chief corroborate that, but this is state-of-the-art equipment. It's new equipment, and over the period of five years, will save some, possibly actually save some money, a little bit.
Yes, annually, we, we go through sort of a fluctuating cycle, where, where this year we need 12, next year we need
Seven.
Eight or so. And with bringing on the new officers and everything like that, everybody will have the same model. It won't be two different models. It will all be the same across the board.
So, thank you. Kyle, you have any
No, I don't have any questions.
Additional questions? Okay. Okay. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes three zero.
Next item under my report, Mr. Chairman, is the consideration to award the contract with the Bucks County Planning Commission to do the work on the OLI and LI zoning district overlay and to explore different use options for the Newtown Business Commons. They have provided the board with a cost of $2,760 to perform the work. So the appropriate motion would be authorization to approve the Bucks County Planning Commission proposal for planning services for the OLI LI zoning districts.
Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
And I'll second. So any discussion from the board?
Yeah, I have, I have some concerns with the overlay that, I'm worried we're going to be ceding our authority to the ordinance. And I'm wondering if it's not a better idea to do use variances based on requirements rather than just a whole overlay. That was all. I don't, I don't think I'm in favor at this point.
Well, isn't the overlay, I was attending the Economic Development Committee last night, and they, yesterday, I think, they were talking about it to use so that we can not limit what's built there or allowed there by what's currently in the zoning, but allow some special cases in an overlay where you might have new uses. Because some of the uses are maybe out of date.
Right. No, that I understand. Then I guess you could change the entire zoning. What I'm trying to say is, I don't want to change it broadly where we could surgically make decisions based on the needs in the industrial park. That's just my opinion.
Well, I'm still not getting what your...
So we grant, or they get a variance to allow use that's not in our zoning, like the Wawa, for instance, rather than just lay it out, let everyone just laid out and we're done with all our input on it for all eternity until we change the thing again.
Well, I'm sort of opposed to all these variances because that puts it totally out of our control in terms of the board of supervisors. Leaves it up to the zoning hearing board, which I commend for their Wawa decision, but we had to go in there and make our case, and it cost us a lot of money. So I just thought, you know, if you're trying to deal with some uses that are no longer, you know, relevant, and you want to put some new uses in there, I thought having an overlay is a better idea than relying on variances.
That's, you're right. That's the disagreement we're having.
And that's where I am. The planning commission are going to be, you know, looking at a lot of variances. We're going to be looking at a lot of variances and ultimately at zoning hearing boards. So I'm going to suggest, I'm going to actually move to table this discussion. I'll be looking for a second if anyone's so inclined, so we can come back to it.
Well, I guess I would second that so we can get some more opinions on it.
Yeah. And I might suggest that I think in Mr. Fidler's report as well, it mentioned that they'd like to see the updated proposal. So we could get that to them on the 5th. They could look at it, and then at our next meeting. Because this is going to be tabled anyway.
Well, we have to take a vote on that, don't we?
Yeah, I was going to say, we need to vote on the motion to table.
Motion to table. All those in favor of the motion to table?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Mr. Lewis, you've got your notes there?
I'm just trying to keep it straight.
Yes.
So just so I have my direction correct, I'm to send the proposal to the Newtown Planning Commission.
Newtown Township Planning Commission, yes.
Next item under my report, Mr. Chairman, is the authorization to complete and execute actuary assumption forms from Mockenhoff. Mockenhoff is the township's pension actuary and has prepared letters of recommendation for all three defined benefit pension plans. The notable change is the reduction in the interest rate from 7.25% to 7% per year. This change may increase the township's needs to allocate additional funds to the MMOs. But they also have noted, and I've spoken to them over the phone, a lot of what they're seeing is that the returns on the investments offset any assumption downgrade, assumption change on the interest that they would calculate in. So we are recommending that the board authorize us to execute the actuary assumption report forms for the township's three pension plans in accordance with the recommendations from the actuary.
Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Second? I'll second. There was a lot of reading material, but I think even I understand it, and I would support it. Again, let the professionals, you know, make the recommendation in this case. Any other discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Aye. And no votes?
Mr. Chairman, if I may have a question for Mr. Lewis. We discussed this briefly regarding the Commonwealth Drive paving. It's a one-way, tight, windy street, I think we all kind of know. Some people were complaining they didn't get advance notification of the milling. And I did drive by, there was just like a, you know, roadwork ahead sign, not anything about the dates or whatever. I don't know what the procedure is. I just wanted to let you know, they voiced, some people got stuck at home, some people got stuck not at home. Anyway, just wanted to ask you again, what is our overall policy for that, and can we improve on that if it's possible?
Typically, the contractors are required to post signage.
Okay.
And we have actively addressed that with them since, it was Monday that we talked about it.
Right.
So our public works director has been in contact with the contractor, and from what I understand, they had put the signs back out there.
Okay, good. I mean, I think that was a unique case because it is such a small, one-way street, narrow one-way street.
Yeah.
And people just, you know, they were saying they had to go back the wrong way to get to, you know, in or out or whatever. So probably something we don't want to have. So I just thought I'd share that info and clarify for anyone who's watching. Thank you.
Sure. And I have one more item to mention under my report, Mr. Chairman. Late last week, we got the 2022 minimum municipal obligation from the pension actuary. It was distributed to the board under Act 205. It's required to be distributed to the board, a governing body of the municipality, by September 30th. So those figures were distributed to the board via email. The total 2022 MMO is $714,211, which is actually a reduction of about $3,200 from last year. So I just wanted to mention that. And that's all I have under my report.
There's no action required for that.
There is no action required.
Moving right along to minutes, bills, and reports.
I guess that's me.
Yes, it is.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes of the September 8th, 2021 Board of Supervisors meeting.
Any comments from the board? Any from the public? Call the question for the minutes? Approval of the minutes? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Very good. Regarding the bills list of to date, September 22nd, 2021, I make a motion that we approve the payment of our bills according to that bill list of total of $269,778.97.
Have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion from the board? Seeing none, any discussion from the community? Let me call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No.
Finally, I want to make a motion to approve interfund transfer that is totaling $252,980.00.
Second.
Motion and a second? All those in favor? Any comments? Any questions from the board?
Nope.
Any questions for the public? Seeing none, call the question. Those in favor, say aye.
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 And none opposed. So passes three zero. Does that conclude your report? Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, that brings us to our second round of public comment. Again, those who are interested in giving comment, please come give your name.
Frank McCarron, 42, written out of circle. I just want to follow up on three comments Mr. Fisher made. One, in terms of fourth of the ninth inning, I think it's more a major league team is playing a minor league team, but we didn't know that, and now we do. Second, I'd like to thank you for following up on the five-year plan with ESI. I think it's important, and I commend you for doing that. And third, you made a comment about COVID earlier, so I'm going to share something with you that I hadn't planned to. But so my friend's niece passed away last week from COVID-related complications, and my friend's sister passed away from COVID on Saturday. And they were both double vaccinated, and they both had breakthrough infections. And, you know, it's kind of very difficult because, you know, my friend told me that her sister's husband was with her, you know, sort of my sister friend's brother-in-law. And before her sister passed away, she asked how their daughter was, and he lied to his wife and said she was fine, you know? So they both had underlying health conditions, one of which was diabetes, that I didn't know could be an underlying health condition. So I'd just like to encourage the township to do all it can to push people over 65 or have underlying health conditions to get their booster shots, because it's, you know, just a tragedy, and that's all to say.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Very. It impacts all of us. Thank you. Any other public comments? Going once, going twice? Okay. Move ahead to old business. Anybody have an item for old business? I actually do. We have a resume that we received, actually a curriculum vitae. Believe we have a, I forgot to ask Mr. Fidler, I believe we have one vacancy on the Planning Commission. And we have an application from Terry Christensen, who happens to be with us. I don't know what we would like to do with this, if we want to fill that vacancy, and do we want to fill the vacancy with Mr. Christensen, who has a very detailed and impressive resume. And with that, I just open it up for discussion. Would we like to fill that position, number one?
Sure. I have no objections.
I have no objection.
I have no objections myself. So maybe we make this easy and...
Suggest that we, again, don't blame the guy who's giving you this news.
It is a new procedure.
Yes. Can we authorize it to be placed on the next agenda specifically as an agenda item before we take action on it?
Okay. Sounds good to me. Mr. Lewis, you good with that? Okay. Mr. Mack?
Yeah, I had an item on the old business. We had discussed, I think, several meetings about implementing hybrid meetings where the public has the option to attend these board of supervisors' meetings at least via remote technology such as Zoom. And I know that we all received some proposals from Video Gold. I know we're not going to make a decision tonight, but I just want to notify the township that I did submit about 160 signatures of a petition of Newtown residents to the board of supervisors who demand that we implement a hybrid meetings, especially for the board of supervisors. And this is not just in reaction to COVID to prevent people from getting this terrible disease, which I just, I just got over a few weeks ago. But also, as Mr. Christensen had mentioned the last time, elderly people who would like to participate in government could have better access. Of course, the immunosuppressed people who are serving, some of whom are serving on some of our committees, cannot afford to come into a space like this. Young parents with children, I know at least one member of the Technology and Communications Committee who finds it difficult because he has to take care of his children. So there are many, many reasons why people cannot physically attend some of the meetings they would like to attend, and it's not because they are lazy. It's many reasons, and I think we need to look over these invoices here. And I know that there are, in terms of the money, I've been in communication with several townships. Warminster, for example, has indicated that they are doing this using ARP COVID release funds. They're using it to beef up our audiovisual capability, they said. So there is a precedent. We have over a million dollars in the bank from the ARP funds. If we're talking about a few thousand dollars, I think that's less than a hundredth of a percent of a million dollars. I'm not sure. I haven't done the math. But I know we don't want to make a decision on this tonight, but we've been discussing this, and I hope we can put that on the agenda for the next meeting.
I agree with you on a lot of those points there. I think we should be broadcasting for sure, Facebook and YouTube. I think the Zoom has some merit as well. It's not a terrible amount of money, but still it does worry me because, you know, we've been dipping into our reserves a bit already. And because I was interested in this, I went up to county to see how the commissioners do it. They have a pretty extensive system in that meeting room that was pretty impressive. I don't think that's quite the level we would need to go to.
Right.
I think it's worth discussion. I agree with you on that. Mr. Lewis, also regarding those, the quotes that you sent, is there any way we could get details on the hardware involved specifically?
I can request that.
Okay, thanks. No urgency, just, I was reading those and I didn't know what we were talking about, so I just thought I'd like to know that. Thank you.
And I would like to see a proposal with the number of hours and the hourly rate all factored out and see what, in the end, the whole cost would be. So it's not only the equipment and the programs, it's the paying the staff. So I, you know, I would like to see that added, and so we know what the whole figure is. And I do believe, I mean, I think we could justify it as an expense under the ARP, at least in part.
I agree. I think ARP money is a good way, good thing to look at for that. I mean, that's almost a perfect example of something that I think would be good for those funds.
So just to run clear, a revised proposal including software specifications along with the proposal, hourly rate estimate based on the number of meetings a year, for which meetings? Just the board?
Well, we could, can we have a menu, like for the board, and then plus the Planning Commission and zoning hearing?
So break it out by each committee or commission?
Yes.
Well, you said there's a base of the equipment, no matter how many committees you're going to use.
Right, so there is upgrades to the booth system up there that need to be... Right, so there is upgrades to the booth system up there that need to be.
And then the rest has to do with what Mr. Fisher was talking about.
It's an hourly charge.
It's hourly rates and stuff. And I, you know, personally think there should be a phased approach, and I think the most important is the Board of Supervisors.
Agreed.
Because I know that not many, I haven't seen anybody at committee meetings except maybe for the planning commission, which I think would be the second most. The zoning hearing board has already mastered hybrid meetings. They've, at least, well, not for the public, but for their members. So we need some kind of a phased approach to make sure we're doing it right, I think.
Right. Speaking for the Finance Committee, what we did was, we had somebody here in the room, and those on the, and, and we were here to also interact with the, with the public, so the public would have input into the meeting. And then that person, we also had a, a monitor to use a Zoom account to bring the other committee members in. And for one of the, and for that commission, that worked. Now, Planning, Planning Commission and zoning hearing board are part of the municipal planning code. They have to be, and they run by a different set of rules. Okay. Any other old business?
I would also note, we have a great new
Don't break it.
Conference phone here that, you know, the planning commission and can use. I know at least one, or two members of the planning commission absolutely refuse to come into this room, and I believe they could use this new conference phone and be able to participate fully in those meetings. I thank Mr. Lewis for getting hold of this. I don't know if you had to go on eBay or what, but thanks.
I'll give credit where credit's due, to Ms. McGovern and with, to our IT department.
Thank you. Any other old business? Any new business? Seeing none, there's no need for an executive session?
That's correct.
Very good. And with that, I entertain a motion to adjourn without obse, without exception, objection. Yes. There you go. We're adjourned.